Good evening and welcome to the April 6th meeting of the West Sacramento Planning Commission. Tonight's agenda is available on the counter along with request to speak cards. A reminder to everyone that request to speak card should be completed and turned into the clerk prior to the completion of any staff presentation. For those speakers wishing to speak on items not on the agenda but within the jurisdiction of this commission, please write the item number on your card. All speakers will be limited to three minutes. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and televised so all speakers in order to be recognized must be called on by the chair and come forward to the microphone. Speaking in public may cause some individuals to be uncomfortable so everyone is asked to be professional and respectful at all times. And we will begin this evening with a pledge of allegiance. Commissioner Castillo, could you lead us in the pledge?
Thanks. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first item on tonight's agenda for general administrative function is a swearing-in of planning commissioners. Because there are none recommended, we will move on to item B, which is presentations by the public on matters not on the agenda but within the jurisdiction of the commission. The commission is prohibited by law from discussing issues not on the agenda brought to them at this time. Are there any people interested in speaking on item B, items not on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on to item C, correspondence and staff communications from the Planning Commission's secretary, Mr. Dilly.
Yes, so no correspondence tonight, Ms. Chair.
Duly noted. Item D is disclosure of ex parte communications. Planning commissioners should disclose any communications they've had on agenda items at this time. Looking to my left, to my right. I did have discussions with representatives from the business community on item number two. Alright, so we only have the one. Item number one for the consent agenda, consideration and approval of the minutes from the March 28th commission meeting.
Madam Chair, I'll move approval of the March 28, 2017 minutes.
We have a motion from Commissioner Liebig.
Second.
We have a second from Vice Chair Sturmfell's. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Are there any abstentions? The motion carries. Moving on to item two, public workshop on proposed amendments to the zoning ordinance, municipal code, chapter 17, to implement general plan 2035 land uses. Mr. Laffey or someone else?
Yes, I'm going to start off real briefly just to bring the commission, especially for our new commissioners, you know, up to where we are tonight and then I'm going to hand it off to Mr. Laffey to get into the details. Our returning commissioners will recall that last year we spent quite a bit of time in several meetings working on the general plan 2035 policy elements and the land use map. That ultimately culminated in a formal recommendation from the planning commission and then final approval by the city council late last year in November and December. So there's numerous implementation measures that were contained within general plan document and will be rolling, you know, those various ones out, you know, over the next, you know, probably likely several years. Some of them are, some of them more right now than others. And so what we have before you tonight is really one of the first implementation measures that we need to, you know, get going sooner rather than later since the approval of the general plan did put several, take a few actions that now needs our follow-up actions to get to make sure that our zoning is married with our general plan. Katie, can you move this slide, please? So just for, so we, previously we had three separate, you know, commercial districts, you know, our neighborhood commercial, general commercial, and community commercial. By virtual approval of the general plan, we actually consolidated those into one commercial district. So one of the things we'll be talking about tonight is consolidating the allowable land uses from the, those three commercial zones, you know, into one. We also created three new land use designations and corresponding zoning and so we'll need to work out some of the mechanics of those zoning districts with the planning commission tonight. These are all implementation steps to implement, you know, the general plan that is and has been in effect now for the last few months. And so we've, we'll be rolling out many other implementation measures coming up and as much as this particular zoning matters, we are recommending that we try to address here in the short term. One of the things that we will be starting up in the next couple of months is a full top-to-bottom review of our entire zoning ordinance. I anticipate that being probably at least a one-year effort and the planning commission will definitely need to be involved with that, you know, quite a bit since it'll really be the first time that we've looked at the zoning ordinance, you know, comprehensively. And so that's another implementation measure of general plan. But in the meantime, since these new land use designations have been applied to various parcels around town, some of which are vacant and are, you know, that have interest in developing them, we do need to get at least some of these mechanics, you know, on the books so that there's much more clarity for those landowners and prospective users of those properties. So that's sort of a bit of a background of how we got to where we are now and, you know, why we're bringing this to you. We did do a preliminary version of this for the planning commission late last year, recognize that, you know, we've had a lot of changes in the planning commission so we wanted to bring this back to you tonight in a workshop format, get your input and then also we can ultimately move to a hearing. So with that, unless there's any questions for me about sort of the big picture stuff, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Laffey who will go into the details of what's before you tonight.
Good evening Chair Austin and members of the commission. As David mentioned, there are four new land uses in the general plan which need to be incorporated into the zoning ordinance. Those are, it's commercial, which consolidates the previous C1, C2, and C3 zone. Corridor mixed use, which is along West Capitol Avenue. Neighborhood commercial, or mixed use neighborhood commercial, which is primarily along Sacramento Avenue. And then medium high-density residential, which is in between medium and high-density residential and it provides a, kind of a density range in between those two. So here's a map, here's a map of the locations of the new zones. With the recommended, the last workshop last year in October, commission recommended that we reach out to business owners and property owners and work with the Chamber of Commerce. So we worked with the Chamber of Commerce and hosted a public open house here at City Hall on March 21st. We identified all the property owners and all the business owners within these new land use zones. When we invited them to the open house, we had pretty good turnout. We had about 75 to 100 attendees and we had different stations with a staff member at each one explaining the different land uses. Generally, business owners were receptive to it. There were a good, fair number of business owners who are, who own auto repair businesses or auto-related businesses who will become non-conforming. Understandably, they were, they weren't, you know, in total agreement with the changes but they, we explained to them that this will be a, these changes will expand the allowable uses primarily for West Capitol Avenue and Sacramento Avenue. So we identified businesses in that survey. We did an existing business survey looking at what their business use is and whether or not they're permitted or not currently. And there's actually a fair number of businesses that are what's called non-conforming. They were permitted in a previous zoning ordinance but now are no longer conforming. So with these changes proposed tonight, that would either continue or they would go from requiring a conditional use permit in the past to being not permitted. So with a non-conforming business, future expansions would require a conditional use permit. That could be expansion in square footage or an intensification of the use. So I'll start with the commercial zone, which consolidates the C1, C2, and C3 zone. We really tried to create a framework for how, what uses would be permitted in each, we had C1, C2, and C3 and there are, because of this consolidation, there are former C1 zones, which were neighborhood commercial, that now because of the consolidation, uses are, yeah, uses in the C3 zone would be the same as the C1. And we wouldn't want to necessarily allow uses that were allowed in the C3 that were farther away from residential in the proximity of residential that C1 was. So we created this framework. Primarily, uses that were permitted in the commercial, the C3 zone, but not permitted in the former C1 or C2 will be, require conditional use permit. Majority of the uses that were in the C1 and C2 will be permitted by right in the new commercial zone. There are some exceptions which are noted on the right of the slide and it's also in the agenda report. So the mixed-use corridor, I should say mixed-use corridor there, that's along West Capitol And it primarily replaces C2 and central business district zones. And as with the previous one, these are our exceptions. So what we did was we used the central business district column in the land use matrix as a, we kind of like copied and pasted that over to the new mixed-use corridor column, but these are the exceptions to that. So there were a couple of uses that were either permitted or conditional in the central business district zone, which we felt may not be right to have that be the same permitted or conditional in the new mixed-use corridor zone. Some of those would be auto repair, auto sales. With this mixed-use corridor, multiple family, multifamily residential would be permitted. And really this goes back to the West Capitol Avenue design guidelines and the West Capitol corridor implementation of the plan for West Capitol to really move away from auto-related uses, industrial uses, and go more towards housing and commercial uses. So the next new zone is mixed-use neighborhood commercial. This is primarily along Sacramento Avenue. There are some other spots scattered throughout the city. And we used the former mixed-use zone as a template for, in that column, for this new zone with the following exceptions noted on the slide. Then lastly, medium high-density residential, R2.5. This zone is created to fill a density range left behind because the density ranges with the general plan changed. So the former R3, the density range for that got bumped up and that left a void there between R2 and R3. So this is the new zone to fill that void. So we're proposing that the land uses allowed in this zone are the same as R2. The only difference is the densities are higher. And, let's see, some other changes to the zoning ordinance, are those noted on the slide? The lot development standards, lot creation standards, and the consistency matrix need to be updated to reflect these new zones. As David mentioned earlier, we will be doing a full comprehensive update to the zoning ordinance in the near future where these will do a lot more in-depth look at maybe different kinds of standards for development, but we just need to get these new zones in there in the interim. And for those, we're recommending that they follow the previous, so mixed-use corridor would be the same as central business district. Mixed-use neighborhood commercial would be the same as the mixed-use zone formerly. And the commercial zone would follow the old commercial, I think the C2 zone. So another item we kind of bolted onto this agenda item was the brew pub definition. We've been running into, so kind of the new, the new brew pub really, our definition hasn't really caught up to that. It's kind of more of a taproom with a brewery component that has a food truck that comes in. That seems to be kind of the new brew pub. So we update, we propose this new definition, which would incorporate that. So we included the ABC license types. So this is a proposal that we have to allow for breweries and taprooms to go into our more commercial areas. Right now, they're only allowed in the industrial areas and with this definition change, they'd be allowed in our commercial area with a use permit as proposed in the land use matrix and also our mixed-use neighborhood commercial and mixed-use corridor zones. So this is a little bit separate from the other items, but it is also an implementation measure of the general plan, so we felt like we could include it. So I'll end my presentation with a map of the new, the new zones. We are looking for feedback on the land use matrix tonight. We're hoping to take this to public hearing to planning commission at the first meeting in May, so May 4th. And I'll conclude my presentation with that. Thank you.
Alright, thank you very much, Mr. Laffey. Before turning it over to questions, I wanted to frame today's discussion a little bit for the benefit of really a half of us are new commissioners, so I wanted to just again give a bit of a perspective. So the intention of this change is to simplify the code and make it a little bit easier for users and also people who are applying and enforcing it. To give a little frame of reference, because we've used a lot of like planning and development jargon, to give you some perspective on density, Monticello, if you're familiar with the apartments on Jefferson, those are about 20 units per acre and some of our newer apartments are upwards of 100 units per acre. So if that gives you a sense of some of these density numbers, that should kind of help with that. The FAR, for those of you who didn't actually look it up, I'm not going to hold it against you, it's a description of how much land is covered by the building. So it's some, I don't want to say open space, but unbuilt land. And then just to give a little definition of this existing non-conforming, right, that's a lot of terms, but what that basically means is that if a property or a business is operating in a space where there are a non-conforming use, they are deemed existing non-conforming, which means that if they desire to make changes, they need to get a conditional use permit. That means they can't just go to the city and ask for something and get it. They need to come to the planning commission, which really gives an opportunity for the, for members of the public to weigh in on this. So I do want to frame a couple more things. One is, there have been, what's that?
Oh, I'm going to probably seek some clarification on that last definition.
Oh, okay. I'll do that in just a minute. I also want to mention that there's been a lot of opportunities for public input on the general plan. And I would say, I don't know, the staff can describe how many, but it would be probably in a couple of dozen, but I'm excited for this opportunity for people to provide input.
Yeah, there was about, almost 10 years' worth of time for, where we had, and we got a lot of good stuff through the last, you know, finish line, a lot of stuff here at the planning commission and council. So we're really, we're very excited to have seen the general plan finally, you know, get wrapped up. But in some ways, as evidenced by tonight, that was also sort of just the beginning. So yeah, so we are seeking your input tonight and input from anyone else who's, you know, here in the audience on our zoning changes tonight. We are trying to keep the scope of these relatively limited because we have a full zoning ordinance update we're about to kick off, but we definitely like to hear any input on these so we can fine-tune this and come back for a hearing next month.
Great, thank you. So I'm sorry for that long introduction. I won't typically do that, but this is kind of a major segue from our general plan adoption in November and to essentially what's going to be implementation moving forward. So yes, I'll start with Commissioner Liebig, see if he has some comments for staff.
Because I had to open my mouth.
And then I do want to note that we do have one request to speak so far. Others are welcome to submit comment cards, but I think we will hear from commissioners first, turn it over to public comment, and then come back to commissioners.
Okay, so prior to we, prior to opening up the public comment period, I would want to thank staff for reaching out to the chamber specifically and doing that due diligence to reach out to the community and especially our business owners. For, since the first set of questions I have is regarding the non-conforming uses, David, I heard some discrepancies between how we would handle non-conforming uses under this new zoning ordinance versus potentially how we've been handling them in the past. Can you, can you review our, how we will be handling the non-conforming uses?
Yeah, I mean, we really aren't proposing to treat non-conforming uses really any differently than what we have done traditionally. But we do want to daylight for the commission and others that at least on these proposals, there are some businesses that may move into the non-conforming section. And that's partially what we want to, you know, discuss if, you know, some of those land uses should, you know, shift categories, you know, become conditional or not. But there are also some businesses out there that were already non-conforming and will remain that way. I think one of the examples brought up in our prior discussion was the auto wrecking yard that's out there on West Capitol currently. That was a non-conforming, for a long time and will remain that way. Typically, with limited exceptions, non-conforming uses, you know, may not be expanded or intensified, although our municipal code does provide for some limited relief from that for certain uses, but that's a pretty limited amount. So I would encourage the commission to just sort of think of a non-conform, if a use becomes non-conforming, that just sort of sets a, sort of freezes them in time, so to speak, where there's no more expansion or intensification permitted after that. And non-conforming uses are very common, especially in a relatively young city like ours. There are numerous non-conforming uses and we have dealt with them in various ways, you know, here at the planning commission. You know, Pioneer Bluff is a perfect example of where those industrial uses are non-conforming and have been for many years now, is an example. So, you know, Jeff is here to prepare to elaborate on that a little further, but that's sort of the high-level view of non-conforming uses.
No, you, I think you answered my question. It was regarding the-
I was going to say, I don't think I've got anything to add to that unless there's a specific question.
It was regarding the use of a conditional use permit to be able to modify the business and there are still restrictions on a business that is in, that has been deemed non-conforming. And it was more than the autos, right? For example, the drive-throughs, those were during the, when we were discussing this in the last time I recall, the drive-throughs were also going to become non-conforming uses?
At least, I think in some areas, may not ever, they've been, those have always traditionally have been conditional already.
Right.
And those that have them out there, you know, in areas, those use permits would remain in effect as those are of, you know, entitlement that was provided to them. And so they would continue to be able to operate under the terms of that use permit.
Okay, correct. I have one more question. On your definition of the brew pub, can we just check a microbrewery that brews beer primarily for, is it really on-sale consumption?
Under ABC language, yeah. On-sale is the term for selling on the premises.
That doesn't really make sense to me, but okay, if that's what it is.
As opposed to off-sale, which is for sale to take away from the premises.
Okay, I assumed it was, okay, thank you.
No further questions. Commissioner Booth?
Yeah, just one question. It was mentioned during the presentation that about 50 businesses would be changed to non-conforming. What's the real-life impact on those businesses that would have to be changed? Now, what, is there a cost for them to come back if they want to expand or intensify? You know, what's the impact on their business operations?
So they can continue to operate as they are now. It really would affect any expansion. If they want to expand at all, they wouldn't be able to. They can do maintenance up to a certain percentage of the cost, I believe. So they want, you know, put a new air conditioner in or something of that nature, they could do that. Prohibits them from expanding. And if they were to stop operating for six months along West Capitol or 12 months in any of the other areas of town, that use would be deemed seized and they couldn't reopen as the same use. So say there was an auto repair and they were along West Capitol and they closed for seven months, they couldn't start again as an auto repair.
And if they wanted to apply for a conditional use permit, there would be a cost to them to do that?
So if there, yeah, if there was a, there is a cost for a conditional use permit, but I think I misspoke earlier. If it's, if it's a conditional use, if they're permitted by right now, now we're, now they're going to be going into requiring a conditional use permit, then it would require a conditional use permit, but if they're, say, say permitted right now, but they're going into being not permitted, that's the case where they, even a use permit wouldn't allow for an expansion.
Okay. I might just have a comment and one, I guess clarification and slash question. And the mixed-use neighborhood area, I was very excited and encouraged to see that, you know, pedestrian-friendly use was, was in there. I think we really, obviously as we, as West SAC develops and made more housing, more density and more commercial, that this is, area is maintained and pedestrian is, and biking and other forms of transportation are encouraged, so very happy to see that. And secondly, on the brew pub, was there, is there a reason for designating just breweries? Has there been a lot, because of the other breweries that are here, has there been more requests for breweries? And the reason I bring that up is just, what if someone wants to do a cidery or winery or some other coffee roasting or any other sort of form of beverage?
We've received a few inquiries regarding opening small breweries like we have already in more of our commercial or mixed-use zones, like the Waterfront or Pioneer Bluff, for example. And right now, under that definition of a brewery, we only allow that in the industrial uses. We- We could expand upon this to include wineries and cider, and distilleries.
Yeah, we, and some of our existing breweries have been looking to sort of graduate, if you will, from some of their little more off the beaten path industrial locations into a little more prominent areas in some of our, like Waterfront areas. So we're trying to anticipate, anticipate that, recognizing that the brew pub definition really kind of goes back to when these were more restaurant oriented. And, you know, that just doesn't seem to be the case, you know, anymore, at least with a full sit-down restaurant. But, you know, we can, we can expand that to wineries. We just want to be a little wary of any type of, you know, mission creep here with this, noting that we're going to look at everything top to bottom here soon.
Thank you.
Just have one question, one of the questions was actually answered, which was the nonconforming businesses and the process I would go about, about that. But how did the, there are obviously, every one of these has exceptions. How did these exceptions come about and how were they determined? Just so I get a good sense of that.
We pretty much just went through the matrix and looked through them and tried to figure out what would be, what did the general plan call for in that land use, that short land use designation? So it wasn't, not an exact science for going through them, but we did try and just go through them generally and look at what's, for example, Health Club right now, Health Club is not allowed in a lot of areas without a use permit. And that just seemed to be a little dated, you know, the general plan is to help, we have a help these communities aspect to that, and part of that's, you know, making gyms more accessible. So we decided, or proposed, to put Health Clubs in the permitted, you know, permitted instead of a use permit. So that's just an example of trying to look at what the goals and policies of the general plan are and trying to incorporate that into the land use matrix.
And then there's a, there's a designation that's A, what's, what's that designation? Access, accessory?
Yeah, accessory.
Can you elaborate on that, just to familiarize?
So an accessory use is accessory to the primary. So Home Depot, primary use would be, you know, building materials. Accessory is a nursery. So that's an example of an accessory use.
Let me start by saying thank you to Mr. Laffey for the presentation and also really appreciate the efforts to speak with the chamber, get them engaged, and do the additional outreach to the business community. I think that was, you know, I think back to Charlie, I remember Charlie's making these comments, and I really appreciate the fact that you guys took them seriously and that we, I think it was a really meaningful exercise, at least from what I can tell.
The chamber was extremely helpful on this. Verna over there, she even had a lot of her staff going on door-to-door in some of these key areas to make sure we were reaching as many of the potentially affected properties as possible.
And obviously, fully supportive of the new designations and understanding the need to get them into the municipal code and make some of these changes. But I do have a couple of questions in a few areas, and I think the first one, David, might be best for you, and it's kind of a broader policy and planning question about, a lot of these zoning changes impact a huge portion of West Capital and Sacramento Avenue's corridors. And typically, when we have such a dramatic change, we almost have a specific plan or some kind of focus on how we want that new area to look, once it's, once we're, once we're changing the uses. And I don't think we have that here. So can you, can you give us some guidance on what the long-term direction is for these two corridors?
Well, we do largely have that for West Capital Avenue. You know, that plan was done probably about 10 years ago now, but it's the West Capital Avenue Streetscape Master Plan, but it's much more than just a design document. It's, it is a policy document, includes a lot of site planning criteria. It breaks up West Capital Avenue, which is at least a couple miles, you know, from one end to the other, into a couple, you know, into some separate districts. And so what we did with the general plan for the new mixed-use corridor was take that segment of it that was really known as the Midtown Residential in that plan and try to craft a land use designation that implemented that plan better than what had been on the ground, you know, previously. The substance of that plan, which was originally prepared by an economist before it got turned over to more of the design side of folks, was really looking at, you know, West Capital Avenue, a couple miles of just straight commercial from one end to the other, probably unlikely that could ever really be absorbed. Especially, this is also when the IKEA Center was starting to come online and then Lowe's and Target and all the others. So really, the logical conclusion, at least for that area, was to move in a, bring, to start to allow backfilling in with a lot more residential. And in a much more, hopefully pedestrian-oriented, you know, environment. So, which focus, trying to focus the commercial more at the nodes like West Daker, Harbor, and Jefferson, because even, even long-term, the, you know, the most of the traffic volumes was more in a north-south direction, you know, versus, you know, east-west. So we're, so this isn't precluding commercial really in most any way. It's really expanding the range of uses that had been previously allowed, especially when it comes to residential. And then so we've sort of used, and Sacramento Avenue we see as being somewhat analogous to West Capital. It's also a lengthy corridor that had been primarily zoned for commercial uses, and there's still not a lot of, you know, market demand up there just yet. And so trying to expand the range of uses and the range of densities, you know, we're hoping to be much more flexible in being able to capture more projects on both areas, noting that both of them still have some challenges, you know, that we need to work on. So really what we have been trying to do is implement, you know, that previous West Capital document, and then take some of the lessons from that and apply them to Sacramento Avenue, which is comparable in many ways, not just because of it, you know, happened, they both happened to run north-south, I mean, excuse me, east-west. So now we're, so now we're trying to, you know, really get into the details of, you know, which each corridor could hopefully be like, at least from a use standpoint. And then we'll work on the design stuff next.
Thanks, David, I appreciate that. Follow-up questions maybe for our city attorney. For those properties that will become nonconforming, does a change in ownership have any impact on the business's ability to operate?
No, a change in ownership will not. Change in use is what would be the issue of concern. So an intensification of use would be prohibited. I think as the, I think you may have heard, you can reduce the intensity of a use, that can be permitted. You can move from a more intense to a less intense nonconforming use under certain circumstances. But ownership all by itself isn't, isn't going to change it.
Okay, thank you. So I guess one of the, you know, the things that stuck out to me by going through the spreadsheet, and again, I appreciate staff providing it, because I think it really provided a nice, like a very holistic picture of what's happening to who, which is really important for us to think about on this end. And clearly, the auto repair industry is, is the main industry in our city that's impacted as far as the number of businesses that would go from a permitted or a conditional use to a non-permitted use. And I'm, I'm having a hard time kind of coming to terms with that for several reasons. One, I think they're good paying jobs. They're skill, it's, they're skilled jobs in our community. Two, they're providing a valuable service to a lot of our residents. And three, there's, there's revenue implications there. And while I recognize that by putting them in a nonconforming use category, we're not shutting them down, in the long term, we're really inhibiting the business for growth, expansion, significant renovation. And granted, some of these businesses have been there a long time and not done any of those things. I'm trying to balance, you know, where so many of these businesses that provide that service will end up going. Do they have a place in the city in which to relocate? Are they going to end up just going away over time? Because if the ultimate goal is to redo this corridor and have it look and feel completely different, what we're, we're kind of saying tonight is eventually we want that business to not be there, we want something else there. And so this may be more of a comment than a question, but that is kind of the, the piece of this puzzle that despite all the great outreach and the good work and the clearly, you know, open and transparent process you guys have laid out for us with the spreadsheet and the public opportunity to comment, I'm still struggling with coming to terms on. And so one thing I would kind of, and I do have a few other questions, but one thing I'll leave on this point is, if there is a way that we can achieve the goals of adopting these new mixed-use designations, getting them in the audience, without impacting so many of the businesses, particularly along West Cap and SAC, that are currently permitted or conditional and have been approved and not make them nonconforming uses at this point in time, at least until a place where I feel the city is maybe more ready to encourage new development in those areas, then I would be really supportive of anything we can do to, to kind of work our way around that. And that, I realize that may be an ask that's not possible, but-
Well, no, I think it absolutely is. That's really what we're here for tonight, is to, you know, drill into some of those things and, you know, see if, you know, we've, this is what we've, you know, proposed initially and what we presented. Any, you know, in theory, any of the uses on the table, you know, can move, you know, from one column, you know, to the other, you know, based on the, you know, the recommendation of the, of the commission. We did recognize that a lot of this did seem to land on auto repair. It wasn't, wasn't what we set out to do. Both of those corridors happen to have a lot of auto repair, you know, businesses of varying types. But, you know, if the, if, for example, if the commission would prefer to keep minor auto repair, you know, a permitted use in one or both of those districts, then that's still possible.
I would certainly be interested in exploring that and seeing what that means in terms of, you know, ultimately how we move the needle on redeveloping these corridors or developing them in the way that's consistent with the general plan. And also what, I'm just not aware of, what is the difference between minor auto repair and major auto repair? Is this like your collision repair shop versus your oil and lube changer?
Well, exactly, yeah, there, we do have definitions, and that's exactly the, you know, the primary difference, you know. It's, you know, smog places and lube versus, you know, body and fender work and engine work and all that kind of stuff. It's the primary difference.
Sure. So there are certainly other uses on the spreadsheet that become nonpermitted or are already nonpermitted that I'm completely in agreement with. I'm just having a challenge being comfortable with so many businesses, mostly small businesses in our community, that would be impacted by this change, knowing that the redevelopment of this corridor, while, you know, is hopeful for the near future, is probably likely several years off to kind of put that burden on those businesses. So I'll leave it, my comment at that for now on that. I did have one other question on the brew pub piece, and it kind of goes back to both Commissioner Lee Biggs and Commissioner Lapore's comments. And so two, two recent examples we've dealt with. The first I would bring back unfortunately is Revision, because I know that their plans were to eventually scale to 50,000 barrels a year. And my understanding is that the microbrewery designation by ABC regs is somewhere at 60,000 at a max for, for a number of barrels a year. Now, that's pretty large-scale production, but I don't know if we've given any thought to how this may impact our businesses from a production standpoint. And then the other, the other thing I'll just tie into that and then let you respond is, the words primarily for on-sale are kind of interesting to me because Jack Rabbit started off as a brewery facility without a tasting room, where they were just brewing and distributing. And so would this language actually limit future businesses who are wanting to come to this area who have that similar model from starting up?
What we're trying to do is sort of now start to finally distinguish between a production brewery, you know, like Rubicon started off wanting to be, or what Revision would want to be, you know, versus what we've, what has really come to real life, which is like Bike Dog and Jack Rabbit. You know, both of whom at least have expressed desires to us to maybe have a, another facility in a more primary location, but keep their brewing operations in the industrial districts, you know, where they are. Partially why they went in those districts is they're more, they're certainly more accommodating to their large tanks and equipment, you know, whereas a lot of retail probably don't have the, you know, building suitable for those. So the breweries in terms of, in terms of full production or however many barrels they want to do, are really, are going to be, remain a separate land use category from this brew pub concept, so that, you know, we could distinct, start to better distinguish between, you know, what is, you know, a taproom versus a full-scale production, you know, facility.
Sure.
So, because we probably don't want those in some of our mixed-use areas if, you know, if they're not suitable.
No, I completely agree, yes. But, but how about the Jack Rabbit example? I mean, does this language inhibit someone who's starting off as a distributor when the language specifies that they're primarily for on-sale consumption? I mean, because that, that's how Jack Rabbit got, you know, to be where they are, right?
Well, and a Jack Rabbit, you know, and, you know, the next Jack Rabbit could, you know, start, also remain in one, probably would likely go still in one of the industrial districts for space. But then having this definition on the books would then eventually allow them to expand to have a second location where maybe they don't do any onsite production, because I don't know if Jeff, you were looking at this or not, but I believe under the type 23 license, you can have a separate facility where you don't actually brew on-premise, as long as you're selling the stuff you brew elsewhere. I think that's what Bike Dog is doing, because they're opening up that second location in Sacramento.
So that really helped me clarify, because I thought this, we were creating a new definition for even those businesses that would, you know, locate themselves in the industrial area at this time. What I'm hearing you say is now this is for our other mixed-use areas.
Yeah, we're, we're trying to expand these, you know, what, you know, because we created the brewery definition, it was initially for Rubicon, who came to us strictly wanting a production facility. This was, this was before the Bike Dog and Jack Rabbit and all that. So we've accommodated the Bike Dog and Jack Rabbit phenomenon under that definition because as startups, they were looking for inexpensive, you know, space, and that tends to be the industrial district. But as this, you know, things grows and matures, it's, it's likely that one of those or a new one may want to open up a more of a, less of a production-oriented facility and more of a, you know, a recreational facility for lack of a better term, in a more, you know, downtown urban, you know, kind of district. So we're trying to accommodate that, but we see that as being separate, we're keeping, trying to keep that separate from a production, wholesale production facility too. I envision that the, you know, the Bike Dog model, where they have their production facility, but then now they have their second location where they don't do any production, to my knowledge, is sort of the model we're trying to follow.
Right. So, so not to get ahead of ourselves, but when we do the larger rezoning exercise, are we going to try to normalize all this between industrial, mixed-use, and what's where it definitely lies?
Absolutely. Every, all things alcohol sales, be it production, on-sale, off-sale, all of that will have to be on the table. And we're going to have to decide how we're going to want to handle all of those types of uses, you know, citywide, is part of that.
Thank you for indulging all my beer questions. I appreciate it.
All right, thank you. So before we turn it over to public comment, I'll add my two cents. So the first is a comment. I think we, we as a commission did our job, frankly, Commissioner Moore, in me, in calling for some really robust public outreach. And I hope that doing public outreach beyond just having a publicly noticed meeting is something that we use for major changes like this. And I'm thinking specifically of the housing element, and if we ever have an environmental justice element or specific plan changes, I would like to see those kind of proactive reaching out to the impacted communities, whether they're a geography or a certain type of population. So my, it's not a question so much as a comment, but I think there are a couple of ways of discussing modifications or feedback to the council, and I'm glad that Vice Chair Sturmfeld brought up targeting it and looking at particular industries, but we can also look at it from geographies. The feedback that I have received from, from folks in the business community has been to look really at the geographies and not so much at the industries. And so let me just be a little more specific about that. When we are doing some of these zoning changes that result in nonconforming uses, the intention is that we are trying to create changes to our community essentially by attrition. It's been my experience that the city has not kind of, you know, forced people out, that again, is my particular experience. But just when, you know, a business kind of comes to its natural next state, it would move on and a different business would take over its spot. So I think it would be, it would benefit us in our subsequent discussion to look at if there are particular areas where we feel like we can probably leave some of the uses as they are and not make some of these zoning changes to those particular areas. In particular, some of the more controversial areas I've seen have been farther west on West Capital Avenue. There seems to be incredibly strong support for changes to areas that are deemed mixed use in South Portland along the riverfront, and also near the intersection of Jefferson and West Capital and Jefferson and Sacramento. So those are just my two cents, is to look at, looking at some geographies and saying, yeah, I don't know that we need to do a zoning change here. So I think, for, to frame the discussion, I think we can look at industries, and we can also look at geographies, and it may be a combination of the two. So those are my comments. I have one request to speak. If you feel inspired to speak, please complete a comment card and submit it to the clerk to my right. And our first speaker is Dan Ramos. If you want to approach, you may need to adjust the height of the podium. And if you could introduce yourself and your affiliation.
You can, you can.
Oh, actually- Oh, actually, can you, is this mic on?
It's at the base. At the base of the microphone, there's a button. It's okay. Well, it's over there. Okay. Good evening, Chairman Austin and members of the Planning Commission. It's great to be here. Good to see all you. This is very enlightening to see this great planning commission. Appreciate those very insightful comments you all made regarding this. So I hope you indulge me to have a little more than three minutes because I tend to ramble and I just wanted, I'm here to say a couple of general comments and then hopefully some specifics, but I want to applaud the staff and stuff. This is something we've needed to do for a long time, especially on West Capitol, Sacramento Avenue, all these focused areas. So appreciate the effort doing, staff has done a great job of reaching out. I've been on the the chambers, Government Affairs Committee for 37 years here before we incorporated. So I've been through this rodeo many times when we incorporated, did our general plan, did our zoning ordinance. And again, when kind of we brought in Southport Industrial Park, we did a whole reordinate stuff. So it's been a, you know, a great collaborative effort. City's always been good. Staff's always, always been good. But my, my general comment, I just want to say this is from years of experience of recruiting companies here, trying to get them here and stuff over the years and stuff like that, is the C word, the conditional use permit. It's gotten a lot harder to do that for a business to come in and it relates to everything that we do. And it's, it is a lot of times where it's appropriate to have a condition to look at it, see what's done. Little experience we have, we did Southport Industrial Park. We, we had our heavy industrial and stuff. We, we made it kind of where the permitted uses, we tried to do our best to squeeze out as many permitted uses as we could and not just go lazy and let it go to the C use because users don't like to go through that process. And believe me or not, it's gotten harder to do conditional use permits because, you know, it used to be and David and Jeff by awareness said, you know, you do a negative deck and you move on, you get through it. But negative decks are tough nowadays to defend. Anybody who wants to challenge on a negative deck, they win. And, and there's a lot of people like out there that leverage you on that situation. So there's a consequences. It catches everybody. So we've seen that. There's a lot of people that know how to fool with Sequin now and that stuff. So I just caution you that be mindful that the C use comes with a lot of, lot of baggage with it, but it is necessary. Not saying it's not, but there's ways to get on. So just as you consider everything as we go along this whole process, I just hope that you realize that it's just not an easy way to go. So this, that's primarily what I wanted to say here tonight, that it just, especially with small business or small owners that have, like you guys mentioned to, to, like you mentioned, like West Capitol Avenue where the wrecking yard is, I'll just give an example. Whatever the port, the business owner, I've got no idea, it might be next to them, might lose their tenant. And they got six months to get someone else in there or else the boom, they lose, they lose the ability to get anybody else in there. And if they can't, they can't lease their building, they can't pay the property taxes, it becomes blighted. And so the, it's unintended consequences happen. So you've got to be real sensitive to these areas and what we do and how we do it. Because it takes a while to, a lot of times what helps with that is a catalyst project in that area there to raise land values and make everybody happy. My three minutes are up, so I'll shut up, but appreciate the.
If, don't leave for a moment. I think, I know I have a question. I'll turn it over to my commissioners, but I want to follow up on Commissioner Vu's question earlier. Could you describe what type of expenses a property owner or operator incurs when they're seeking a conditional use permit?
Well, it primarily, it's a pretty exhaustive effort. You got to fill out, you know, it's 1,500 bucks or whatever it is like that, but it's mainly time. As I say, you're a building owner and you're trying to recruit a tenant, you come in, if it's not permitted, you say it's, it's, you know, 90 to 120 days to get, and then you fill out the applications, pretty, pretty, you know, intense application. $1,500, you know, that, that happens sometimes either the user does it or the owner does it and commit. But you got to go through a long process to make sure your application is complete. You're usually beyond 120 days. It's the time element. I don't want to hassle with that. They, they move on. They go somewhere else. That's what happens. And it's a process that, it's mainly the timing of the process that really, then, then you're vulnerable. You don't know coming back, what conditions you're going to get that can make your project unfeasible. So you got this long waiting period for this uncertainty. And we've been very good here in West Sacramento in our business recruitment and everything we've done. This has been our success. It's been we able to get businesses here because we've had the big P here. And we've seen it, you know, it's Southport Industrial Park is a good example of that. We have a, we don't get hung up with, with a lot of conditional use permits. It's been able to do well. And, and that's one thing about West Sacramento, a lot of our, and more examples of industrial where our industrial's been separated. It's out in Southport Industrial Parks or different areas. We have the one industrial on West Capitol. It's just been the old guy in Houston Galveston there, but that's, you know, that's been there forever. But we've done a good job of, of, you know, organizing where our industrial is and how it works and stuff like that. So, you know, it's been a real success story for us, having the ability to get users in here and get them in here fast. It's why we win these competitions. Many cities though, years ago have gone over it. Every use has to be reviewed for conditional use permit and that timing is what hits us. It makes it hard for us. So anyway, I just wanted to kind of generally say that.
Do any of my commissioners have a question?
In your experience, what industries have been most impacted with a conditional use versus a permitted use before?
Well, a lot of times it comes down to environmental, if they have chemicals and stuff like that. And we've actually did a good job of putting performance standards in our stuff, like in industrial that kicks in the condition if you have. So a lot of users will get smart and will, so hey, if I have this quantity, if I just lower it to here, I'm in. And so that, that give and take happens. The give and take on, in the nonconforming areas, which we need, we need the transitionists and I, you know, I've, I've got some issues up in Pioneer Bluff. You'll probably see me back a little bit here, but the it's, if you're bringing in a use, you had a tenant, they move out, they come back in. You got a new tenant comes back in, you have to go, is it this, if this, who determines if this use is, is in more intense or the same or less? Do you have to go through a conditional use process to determine that? That's, that's, that's that long period of time that happens that just to get a determinant if you're less intense or not and you don't, you can't recruit any tenants. So what happens? You never get a tenant because you can't guarantee them this timeline and you can't lease your building. Hard to pay your property taxes and you've come blighted. You just, you shut the thing down and it's, so it's a sensitive thing to do. So it's just a matter of being, working with, working with people and realizing that, you know, maybe we can speed up the process and something like that where it's a zoning administrator that's doing it that could make, call the shot and work out a deal where the use is for only a certain period of time. So, and kind of ramble on, sorry about that. But just wanted to express it's, it's a, it's a real strength of West Sacramento, what we got. And I just hate to see us lose it and that know that the big C has sometimes some unintended consequences that we don't realize when we do it. We feel good about it. We've got to review that, you know, and all of a sudden that timeline messes it up. Thank you.
Well, before you leave, do we have any other commissioners who'd like to address Mr. Ramos?
He keeps trying to run away.
No, no.
Well, I got a bad habit of rambling on here and getting, you know, at the council meeting, you hit the three minutes and she say, use a minute saying howdy do to everybody.
Any comments? All right, so last call. Thank you very much for your comments. We really appreciate that. And I will share with you that if you have some specific comments, like particular, again, industries, applications, uses or particular areas, I would encourage you to submit comments in writing to the planning staff.
We will. We had, on the chamber, especially we have our meeting next Tuesday and this is our full focus. So you'll hear us, I think you'll see that through the chamber, a lot of this coming back, but appreciate the effort. You've done a good job. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. So checking to see if there are any additional comments from the public. Seeing none, I'll close the public comment period and turn it back to my fellow commissioners. I'll start with Commissioner Lapore. If you have any questions, additional questions for staff or comments?
Nope, good. Thanks.
And Commissioner Casio?
No additional questions, but I would like to revisit the, the comment that Commissioner Stromphel mentioned about the automobile industry being the most impacted. And obviously high paying jobs, West Capitol is, is where they're mainly, you know, reside. And so like to revisit that if we'd like as a.
You mean like at the, in this discussion or at the next meeting?
In this discussion, yeah.
Okay, because we'll have, we'll have future meetings, I think we'll discuss this, but.
Okay.
No, no, I mean, we, yes, we can talk about that. So I don't know if Vice Chair Stromphel wants to address that a little bit more or?
No, just a, just a few quick comments based on the, the public feedback and your comments, Chair. I completely agree with the notion of looking at this from a geographical standpoint as well. The other corridor I point out, if the map is still available, is that one little quarter behind Jefferson and right under the underpass there. That's like that two block triangle that, that clearly is kind of off on its own place. You can't really see it from the map, but that little red, that little red triangle on the top middle.
We kind of call that the ice cream cone, it kind of.
Yeah, so that would be another area that.
Like Jefferson and 15th?
Yeah, but it's behind there, right? So it's behind the Chevron station in that area.
Brever, Soleil, that area.
You know, I get that might be an area we want to address sooner than later because of what's happening in Bridge District in proximity. But, you know, until we get further along there, that'd probably be an area where I'd look to like hold back a little. On this, on the conditional use point, certainly appreciate Mr. Ramos's comments. From what I could tell from the spreadsheet, the only really other business categories that were impacted would be fueling stations, which I think, I mean, I'm at least comfortable keeping that in the conditional category and drive-throughs, which I'm also comfortable keeping that in the conditional category. So I did have a quick question for staff. Is, is there any other major zoning changes outside of the businesses that are on this spreadsheet that may take place for new development that would be conditional that currently is permitted in these areas?
Well, this is, this is everything in our, everything in our land use matrix that we have now that we're in the C1, C2 and C3 districts. That, you know, we're trying to, you know, consolidate those. So some are, some were permitted before, maybe conditional now and vice versa. And so this, this, at least for now, we may develop additional land uses later. But for now, this is everything in the matrix that was there previously and now we're trying to just, you know, blend them together. And then we've, as Mr. Laffey indicated, for those new districts, they're new names, but they're, they're not that dissimilar from what was under the underlying zoning, you know, previously. We're mostly trying to expand the range of uses overall, even though some particular uses might be contracted. But we would very much like to get direction from the commission tonight. If, if any, if any of these new districts, if the uses are, we put them, if we put them in the conditional category, you want to move them back over to permitted or vice versa, that's what we'd really like to hear tonight. Even if you just, you know, not going line by line, but if there's, you know, general, you know, use types, we'll make those adjustments before, you know, before we come back to you in hearing.
So to be very specific in response to feedback to that request, the minor auto repair obviously is something that I would like to see move out of the non, nonconforming in certain areas at least, if we're, depending on how you guys want to proceed and looking at that. The other one that stuck out to me was the veterinary clinic, which seemed somewhat random of a thing to make go from permitted to conditional. There's, well, there's one of those businesses on there. And then the last comment I'll leave you with and it's something that really stuck with me that, that Mr. Ramos said, because I think it, it sums up my discomfort with some of this, is the unintended consequences piece. Recognizing that West Cap and Sacramento Ave are economically, you know, some, a part of our more disadvantaged areas of our town and those corridors and some of our more challenged areas when it comes to crime and public safety and adequate lighting and, you know, street paths for pedestrians and travelers. I want to be really cautious about doing anything that's going to create more polite in those areas. That's going to shut down more businesses, have more fences wrapped around buildings and create more nuisances in possible areas for crime and activity to occur. And so I think that's the essence of my heartburn around so many, creating so many nonconforming uses is the result in the back of my head is maybe not today, maybe not six months from now, but at some point, some of those businesses that are there are going to shut down. We're not going to be ready to redevelop them. No one's going to be interested in purchasing them in the moment and they're going to end up unused spaces. And so to the extent, whatever we, however, city staff thinks is appropriate to move forward on that, to the extent we can really think about what those unintended consequences might be and how to, you know, mitigate against them on the front end, I think would be really helpful for me on this.
Well, I certainly see what, what you're saying and those, those areas are definitely not quite ripe yet for, you know, any type of wholesale mixed use, you know, development, you know, quite yet. And so, you know, we do look at our typically, we would typically do look at our zoning, you know, pretty much annually. You know, there'll be opportunities in the future to review these things if, you know, think economic conditions start to, you know, improve significantly in some of these areas. So there's, there's no reason, there's no like abiding reason to move a lot of businesses into a nonconforming state, you know, at this time. This was our first crack at it and we know we got a lot of, you know, good input through the chamber and that community meeting from the planning commission last time and then from the planning commission tonight. So we would, we would very much like to, you know, hear specifics about either geographically, as the chair stated, if we wanted to, you know, look at a particular industry and then in each geographic area or, or just go into within, look within each geographic area, look at the uses. It might be easier to just talk about a certain land use type and then say, do we want to leave it permitted or conditional in the West Capitol Corridor, Sac Avenue Corridor and then all the commercial spaces. But we'd like to, we'd love, we very much would like to, you know, try to get this nailed down a little more with you tonight. So when we bring it back, hopefully it could be ready for action.
So I will relinquish the, the mic in a second, but I think I, Chair Austin's comments regarding the Pioneer Bluff and Stone Locks and, and the Southport areas and the changes there and also the changes on the far west cap side are things that I completely agreed with. It's, to me, it's the, it's the core areas in the, in the core of the city of Sacramento Ave, West Cap and then probably that little triangle of the ice cream cone that I have significant heartburn over making some of these changes to having so many nonconforming uses. And when I looked at the, the list of addresses, most of the nonconforming uses that would be created by these changes would be in those three areas. So I think for me, maybe that, the fix may be industry specific or it may just be geographic or it could be a combination of both. But those are the three areas for me that I would like to see us address and try to, try to move some of those businesses out of, out of nonconforming uses into, you know, whether continue to conditional if they were previous conditional or permitted if they were previously permitted.
And, you know, a broader direction like that is, you know, workable for us too, if we can, you know, take it a broader path at moving some of these, you know, over. We are talking, you know, relatively limited segments of town. You know, this is not all of West Capitol from one end to the other. It's essentially West Acre to Houston. It is most of the length of Sacramento Avenue. So, you know, other areas like Pioneer Bluff, there's no changes on the table, you know, right now or nor will there be anytime, you know, soon at least. So these are, you know, these limited areas where we made the general plan changes. I think what, at least what I'm hearing is that we would prefer to at least keep minor auto repair permitted in these, I guess, all three, you know, sort of zoning districts. As one, I heard the veterinary clinic, that one makes, that makes sense. Those are relatively benign uses and people use them a lot. Are there other use types or overall or within each district that we want to address?
The only question I had on, back on auto repair was, was there a reason why those were highlighted? Was environmental taken into account or what was the?
Primarily, we are drawing from what's in the West Capitol Avenue Action Plan about trying to move away from auto oriented uses on certain, certain segments of West Capitol Avenue, particularly in the, what they call the midtown residential segment. We recognize that those are, you know, services that, you know, people do indeed use and need in a community. It's a matter of do, do they need to be right there in that portion of West Capitol where they certainly will continue to be allowed in numerous other parts of town. But, you know, obviously we're not starting with a complete blank slate out there. There are, there are many existing businesses of that type in that segment. And so, you know, we, we could keep them permitted if that's the direction of the commission. But the basis was what was in the West Capitol Avenue Action Plan. Or excuse me, West Capitol Design Guidelines.
Thank you. I hear everybody. I just want to remind us to move cautiously as we're making changes that potentially contradict what we've just tried to put into the 2035 general plan. And also stress that we're not making changes for today. We're setting the plans for the future. So by making some of these businesses noncompliant, we are not closing them. They, they will remain. They just cannot expand. Essentially, that's it. I can give several examples of where this has been implemented. One is just, can't get my orientation over here. There's a, there was a truck repair right near Ironworks, right near the, the new apartments going up there. That kind of fell into the, the problem where the tenants actually, they could not get the tenants in there within six months and the city said no. And the reason is because that, that land is developing, it's changing and it's going to that business mixed, mixed use residential. to that business, mixed, mixed-use residential. And if we didn't have this in place, that would not be happening, and that change will not, that, that change won't, won't be made if we don't put these policies in place. Same thing with Bridge District, Stone Lock, and up on Pioneer Bluff. There's several examples of businesses. Now, I don't agree with every single one that we apply this to, but in general, we, we aren't able to make the changes that we want to implement in our gen, general plan if we don't put these policies in place in the first place. So just as, just as a reminder, I mean, I, I do, obviously, do not want to close down a business that is thriving. That, that's not the intent of this. And if they are thriving, maybe we can find a better spot for them, or allow them to be a conditional use permit. But, but if we're trying to get away from the auto industry on, on some of our busiest streets, we, we need to start with the zoning.
Commissioner Vu, do you have any comments?
Yeah, just a, a quick comment. You know, I think the questions that I had earlier, and what Commissioner Castillo had earlier, kind of, you know, circulated a little bit around what Commissioner Stromphel's really hit on the head, and, you know, it's about putting additional burdens and restrictions on these small businesses through no fault of their own. But no, I'm glad to hear that the staff is open to, you know, making these changes, and, you know, maybe on a case-by-case basis, or, you know, what have you. But I'm, I'm curious, it was mentioned that the, to apply for a conditional use permit can take anywhere up to one hundred and twenty days or even more. You know, is there a way that, you know, one, I guess, you know, why does it take so long? And two, is there a way to speed up that process at all?
Well, every use permit is unique. Some, we, like the one we did earlier this year, we did that one in probably sixty days, including the holidays. Really what ends up driving the primary duration on these is the, what level of environmental review is required. You know, projects that we can find an exemption on, we can typically bring, you know, fairly quickly to the planning commission. Those ones that we cannot exempt, where we need to prepare some form of environmental document, there are noticing requirements that go with that. And then, then more, most recently, we've had some requirements for Native American consultation, that is, in the real world, so far at least, is proving to sometimes take at least a couple of months on its own. You know, we try to work on other aspects of the project while that consultation, you know, process is occurring. But that is, you know, what Mr. Ramos said was, you know, largely true, that use permits can take a while, depending upon largely environmental review and other public noticing requirements. But the majority of them, we were able to do, you know, within a couple of months, but it certainly is possible they may take six months or longer. And, and those all come before the planning commission.
Great, any other responses?
I, I'll be really brief, because I've said a lot, but I did want to respond to Commissioner Liebig's thoughts, because largely I agree with them. This is the tool we use to, to plan for future development in our community, and I think, but I think where I'm struggling is, you know, and I'm all for adopting these new zoning types and getting them into the code, but we're not mandated to determine where right now. Where can happen at any point in time? So where we decide to apply these zoning, these zoning designations can happen today, it could happen six months from now, it could happen a year from now. And so I think what I'm suggesting is that we have so many other areas of our town that we're trying to either develop or redevelop at this point in time. We may be premature in setting up a whole nother area for redevelopment before we're really ready to have the, the dollars and the interests and the surrounding communities developed to a point where it will be ready. And what I don't want to see is this lapse where most of those businesses in six or seven years have shut down, but we're still developing the Bridge District and filling that out because we've had another recession. And that, that's the situation I want to avoid, particularly in the West Cap Sacramento area, because of some of the other, you know, socioeconomic challenges and, that we have there. So I, I think that's my, my hesitation, but I totally respect and agree with where you're coming from on that.
Yeah, I'd just like to clarify for the commission that these, the new zoning, zoning designations, the mixed-use corridor, the R2.5, et cetera, those were approved with the general plan, so those are on the books and are applied to those parcels now. What we're really trying to do is flesh those out, in terms of the land uses and some of the primary development standards for each of those districts. So this is fairly important, because we do have some properties that are a bit of, in, kind of, in a bit of limbo right now, which we never, which is not, is not a circumstance we, you know, we really want to have. So we do need to make, you know, move, you know, at least to get some, some things on the books for these, for these areas, because the new zoning designations are already on the properties.
But, but we could come back in the future and change what, you know, the use, the allowable uses of those zoning designations, right?
Oh, absolutely, yeah, we, we look at that almost annually-
Right.
-in various areas.
So if we were to add some things back now to reduce the number of non-conforming uses, there's nothing to say, we could come back in a year from now, or two years from now, and start scaling back if we notice development's starting to come that way, or the conditions are changing.
Oh, absolutely, yeah, absolutely.
Danny would hate, hate to hear this, but if we're, if the goal is to go away from auto industry, are we really going to put a P there? Or is it going to be a C?
Well, and Seamus noted that, you know, my auto repair uses will remain permitted in this, in the new commercial district. It's really only in the SAC Ave and West Capitol Ave area where they may, lease was on, what we initially proposed was to make a lot of those not allowed anymore. But that's something that, you know, is, why we're here tonight is to see if that's what we really want to do, or should we, you know, keep those still being permitted on some level or not.
So I, I'd like to reiterate that we've invited Mr. Ramos, as well as members of the public, chamber, people listening at home, to submit specific recommendations in writing, because the concern surprisingly may not even be about permitted or conditional on minor auto repair, it may be completely different uses that we have not addressed today. So I'd encourage you to do that sooner rather than later, so we can include that in the next staff report. For my recommendation on geography, to piggyback on Vice Chair Stromphel's point, I would be comfortable proposing, and turning it over to, to my fellow commissioners, on not updating the, the, the West, West Capitol and Sacramento Avenue areas, generally, I'm open to areas, but generally between Todd Hunter and Harbor. I mean, those are areas that I think, again, are already pretty impacted, and I think that giving them a little, giving that particular area a little bit more time before adopting these new regulations would be, I think, a, a good move, in my opinion. So that's one aspect, so I think, you know, we've heard the proposal on minor auto repair, we've, with some debate, and we've, I'm now putting this, one geography on there. We also talked about the ice cream cone at Jefferson and Fifteenth. And so that's what I have to add to that. Let me see if I have-
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
I, I just want to make one point. There are a lot of things that are possible, but for example, the notion of geographically approaching this may be a little challenging if you have a stretch that is all zoned the same zoning category. We can't really easily permit certain activities in one portion of property zoned the same way as, as another portion of property down the street. We could, it is possible you have a PD process, but it wouldn't be, it's not a simple matter of saying, at one end of West Capitol, we're going to allow this use, and at the other end, in the exactly same, in the exact same zoning category, we're not going to allow that use.
But, but one way of doing that is like a PD overlay for a particular area, but that would just add another thing?
Yeah, that is a, that's not a simple process.
Yeah, that would be technically a rezoning of those properties to add that overlay, you know, which again, is, is possible, but that's not what we have in front of us tonight.
It's contrary to the, it's rights in creating an exception, and we're already trying to adopt the rule.
Yeah, but it'll be, those are, those are kind of things that we may, one of the things, and when we get to the zoning ordinance modernization, I do want to look at concepts like that, because, you know, we have like R1A zoning in, you know, half the city, but all those, those neighborhoods aren't all the same. So we, we may want to be-
That's kind of what I think we're all addressing, is that some of these areas are zoned the same, but they are patently different neighborhoods. And so that's, I think, the way we're all trying to accommodate, you know, some of that consideration.
Yeah, so that's why, you know, general plan, you know, looking at, you know, this, you know, thirty thousand-foot view, now we're trying to drill that down a little bit, a little more into the real world. But, you know, at least for now, you know, we can establish, you know, the, the, what we're really trying to do is establish the land use matrix as it applies to these new districts. And so we, not, you know, not, it's not really what I would call wholesale changes, you know, top to bottom in those areas from what has been permitted, but we obviously wanted to highlight some things that, you know, may be affecting existing businesses, and see if that's still where we want to go. But I think, you know, we, for now, we need to look at this geogra, I agree with looking at the geographies, but it needs, we can't look right now really at a subset of one particular geography.
All right, thank you for that feedback. So to summarize what we've discussed today, opportunity for written comment in addition to the public comment, staff will be returning with a staff report to both, is this correct, the council and the commission for-
Yeah, council will take final action on it, on it as a zoning ordinance, because it'll be done by ordinance. So we will be asking the commission in a formal hearing to make a recommendation on that ordinance, and we'll have a resolution for you to sort of memorialize that.
Okay, great, sounds good. And then you'll take into account some of the comments that commissioners and the public have provided. So are there any additional comments or questions from commissioners? All right, great, then we will move on to the next item, which is informal discussion. Does anybody have anything to announce, or, or request for future agenda items, that's another option? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Moved by Commissioner Stromphel, can I get a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Castillo, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, we adjourned.